Good evening. On this meeting for our Board of Commissioners for Monday, April the 9th, 2018. And as is our usual practice, we'll begin our meeting with Mona Stott. Thank you. Jay Farrell, would you please give us a flash of the agenda?
Please, more high. What leads us to the black of the United States of America? To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being just as all.
Thank you. You would be welcome to this meeting, whether you're here on business or whether you're here and just see how government works. I noticed, just introduced myself to a family in the back with two small children who are here to show their family how governance occurs and how nice to have you all with. We have our agendas before us. Are there any changes or amendments to the agenda as amended?
Yeah, I would like to pull item number four, the consent agenda, to make it new business number one. It'll be very good.
Anything else? Is there a second, and I'm sorry, a motion to approve the consent agenda and the regular agenda as amended? Amended?
I would like to add that we're, I'd like for us also to modify the minutes that are before us this evening.
Oh, yeah.
Very minor changes.
And they're at our desk here for the approval of the minutes of March the 20th. Is there a second? That will be Foley's motion. Second, if I panel Baldwin, those who favor pleasing, the question, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed. That approves both the consent agenda and the regular agenda. Our next item is public expression. We have three speakers signed up to address the board and the audience. First is Joy Hewitt. And if you would please come to the podium and give your name and address.
I'm Joy Hewitt, 3069 Silk Hope on Springs Road. And Beth Carter is passing, is also signed up to speak after me, and she lives on 34 Waddell Olive, then off Ex Campbell Road. And so she is yielding her time so that I could have a little bit more time to read my letter to you. Dear Pittsburgh Commissioners and the Planning Board, thank you for the opportunity to express concerns about the overdevelopment of the area around our town and the dire need to preserve woodlands, greenways, and river quality. I first came to the area as a college student in Chapel Hill in 1968. I paddled the Hall River before Jordan Lake. I have hiked trails and enjoyed the beautiful countryside of Chatham County for nearly 50 years in my roots, and many of my friends' roots go deep here. In 2000, I began teaching at Central Carolina Community College in Pittsburgh. Because I'm retired now, I have time to speak about the importance of keeping the water quality of the Hall River, the tree canopy, and other natural resources from the disturbance new developers are creating in the rural character of our county. I speak for many who live here who do not have time, energy, or hope enough to speak out about our concern for maintaining the quality of life we treasure in Pittsburgh and the environment around it. We urge you to prevent misguided or insufficient planning that will result in traffic congestion, overbuilding, and too many hard surfaces that do not absorb rainwater or provide oxygen as trees and greenery do. Many of us were dismayed by recent requests to rezone 91 acres at 64 and 15501 for mixed-use development right next to the high school and across the road from the new city. Chatham Park is putting in the watershed of the Hall River. Residents have learned of plans for a 264-unit apartment complex right across 64 and Powell Place. They feel they have no say in stopping it. I'm cutting back on some of this. Can't the county residents be considered in decisions to turn the ETGA of Pittsburgh into a carry or apex-like maze of construction and importation of a whole new population into the expensive housing plan for the area? Many county respondents to surveys and public input in the comprehensive plan adopted in 2017 indicated the top reason they chose to live in Chatham County were its rural character, lifestyle, or scenic beauty. Last year's survey for the Chatham County Comprehensive Plan included a wish to preserve our natural heritage. From the county's public input into county planning, two big ideas included, one to permanently protect 20,000 acres of additional land by 2040, and another for our county to remain carbon negative. That means saving trees and grass, utilizing sustainable energy, not an overabundance of commercial buildings and parking lots. At a meeting of Friends of the Lower Hall River, Hillary Pace with the Chatham County Planning Department presented an update and survey results about parks, recreation, and natural resources from the comprehensive plan that will guide development of the county over the next 25 years. She provided some highlights on that survey I hope the Planning Board and Town Commissioners will keep in mind before allowing more developers to have their rezoning plans approved. Top two concerns about the future are loss of rural character, lifestyle, or scenic beauty, and urban growth pressure. What survey respondents liked best about living in Chatham County is rural, small-town character. Two top priorities for future growth and development are more parks, public open space, recreation facilities and programs, and preservation of existing tree canopy and natural areas. Top priority for parks and natural resources is preserve natural areas, forests, and wildlife habitat. Highest priorities for recreational facilities for the county are conservation of natural areas and greenways and hiking trails. And again, top reason survey respondents chose to live in Chatham is rural character, lifestyle, or scenic beauty. Traffic congestion results in anxiety and irritability, while nature provides calm and peace. The quality of life for residents of Chatham County should be prioritized over the desires of developers to make profits. How many shopping centers do we really need in a 10-mile radius? Plopping commercial centers and apartment complexes willy-nilly everywhere at 15501 and 64 will be a nightmare that traffic lights and more roads can't fix. County taxpayers will be paying higher prices for restaurants and other services than those from wealthier parts of the country can already afford. Don't make us pay the ultimate price for lost quality of life. The town has a responsibility to those who live in the ETJ but have no vote to ensure their day-to-day lives are not negatively impacted by even more ill-concious development. The Department of City and Regional Planning is right down the road at UNC, yet no traffic assessment was done for Chatham Park nor environmental impacts assessments used. The North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission has expressed concerns about impacts on the Hall River. Again, strategic planning is required to keep the ETJ from becoming a major mess. Already, the drinking water for those using the Hall River or Jordan Lake has been compromised. Stormwater runoff without the conservation of forested land that can help mitigate some of the damage from Chatham Park will impact water quality. But as one homeowner in Pittsburgh asked me, where is the water for all these new people to come from? How far down the road is the Planning Board looking with increasing the density of population and the problems it will bring? What about the tree protection ordinance in the town of Pittsburgh and the ETJ? Will all the trees be gone before that is implemented? The Planning Board has already heard from those working on the tree ordinance, so I won't go into all the benefits tree canopy and wildlife corridors provide to a community. But money from tourism with Chatham's scenic beauty and its wonderful river system should be considered along with developmental profits. Chatham Park's plan for limited green space are not sufficient to meet our needs. Please, you still have time to get some of it right. For those of us who love the beauty of Chatham as it has been, for future generations that will need someplace to get away from the madness of city sprawl and commercialism, let Briar Chapel's megasite and Chatham Park City Bond dropped in the woodland of our county be enough. Just mitigate their damage with some careful planning to preserve some of the forests and water that they impact. We will need those resources. Thank you for letting me express some of my concerns. Please work with our county commissioners to consider reasonable land use plans that preserve the integrity of our environment. Isn't it your ethical duty to do so? Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. I noticed that the next speaker who signed up, Joe Sanders, wants to speak on the convenience store in the historic district. And we do have a rule, which is actually documented, which says that if an item is on the agenda for the evening, and that one is, that we will not take public comment home. There's already, however, this is a plan that has not had public hearing. I don't know what the pleasure of the board is. Do you want to keep with that tradition, or would you like to hear Joe's thoughts?
I'm interested in hearing what you have to say.
Since you were not aware, we didn't think, things were clear.
Really glad to know my comments are very short. My name is Joe Sanders, and I live at 270 Burnett Circle Extension in Pittsburgh. And I did know it was on the agenda, I just didn't know it was about the preservation. And without knowing what information you're going to share, or the Planning Board that's going to share, or the Eagle representatives are going to share, I had two questions that I hope will be answered in whatever is shared tonight. One of those is, my first question is, why does Eagles want to place their business in a location that is wholly inappropriate for our town, and moreover, is not wanted in that location, when they might choose to place their store on the outskirts and be likely to get the support of local residents as well as travelers? I am aware that of a couple of answers to that question, which is, because they can. I'm aware of that. And for the money, that's another answer. But I would hope for some more meaningful answers tonight in the discussion. My second question is, and this may be hard to answer, what is the Pittsburgh Town Board doing to explore avenues that are designed to preserve the value in the field of Pittsburgh by preventing such inappropriate development and at least delaying it long enough that you have adequate time to explore all of the impact of such development or impacts? Because it won't just be historic and aesthetic and cultural. There will also be public safety impacts and environmental impacts. For 25 years, I worked at an establishment directly across the street from the proposed site, and I assumed, being in what was widely known as the historic district, that we were under certain requirements or restrictions about what we could or couldn't do with our property, all in the interest of preserving Pittsburgh's valuable character and assets. But apparently, my assumption was wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. So the people signed up for Citizens Matters. Our next agenda item is Commissioner Updates. This is the time when we usually talk about what we've done in the community, and I would like to welcome everybody's water bottles to the table tonight. This is a gift from me for one of the teeny little steps that we say that we're making towards climate change, and so our reuse bottles are a gift from me for that occasion. I've been continuing to meet with the county and town, this evening, I've been meeting with the town on a regular basis, along with the following special items. I've met with, worked with the town and the county to coordinate recycling containers for First Sunday. Attended a Grand Trees Walking Tour of the town of Pittsburgh, and Joy Hewitt was one of the members of that wonderful walking through town. Learned a lot, didn't we, Joy? Attended Planning Board meetings, continued weekly meetings with Chatham Park and staff on water agreement. And yesterday, on Friday, I attended a seminar in Greenville that dealt with the School of Government's recommendations about performance review of managers and boards. And we have regular meetings of the EDC and the Downtown PBA and the Climate Change Group and Triangle J Council Government. Does anybody else have a meeting that they would like to report on?
I was trying to let people know that there is a next Human Relations Meeting, it's going to be next week at 6:30. Maybe the city has to let me know where.
Next Thursday at 6:30? Okay. And you have other things? Did you mention the door?
Yes. I attended the Triangle J Board of Delegates meeting on March 28, 2018. Very enlightening, and I have several things I'd like to give to the Town Board in reference to it. I have looked on statewide water and wastewater infrastructure master plan. So that is what the state is looking at, all of the water, how we use the water, and I've got another for everyone.
James, you have something?
Yeah.
And also, I was going to say, also, some type of grant that the town can apply for. The deadline for one, unfortunately, is April 30. The deadline for another is 9/30/2018. And that may be, we'll look at this in terms of a master plan, we'll read through that and see if there's any type of informational grant that can assist this with the water, wastewater, or either one of those. And in addition to that, we updated the charter for the Triangle J Council Government that each member town, as well as county government, should be receiving that for approval, and then it will be sent back to the Triangle J Council Government. The other meeting I attended was the Affordable Housing that was with the county, and we have several interesting things. The county has actually begun a housing trust fund, and we are looking at the guidelines in reference to that, or applying to establish the guidelines. And there was a preliminary draft that we received at that meeting. That meeting was actually April 5 last week. So we're working on that, and I will give you all the copy of that draft. So those are two of the main things that we're working on. And on Thursday, we have a meeting with the town that are a task force for Affordable Housing that will be held at the Chatham Park offices, which are located behind O'Jangles. And that is the meeting, which is also open.
Thank you.
All I can do is an update on the Main Street program. And Joe, one of the things that the Main Street program is doing is trying to develop an overlay district of zoning regulations for the boundary that is essentially the downtown Pittsburgh. And we've been working on that for a couple of months, and so we're hopefully getting close, but it's slow writing. Another couple of things that Main Street wants to do, we've got our trash cans down on Hillsborough Street, but we want to engage in recycling as well. And there is a product that is very similar to the trash can, it's a dual container of trash and recycling, and so we're thinking that we'll replace some of the trash cans with those dual facilities and then relocate the trash cans elsewhere. And also about the handrails, and I know, Jay, you were very interested in copper handrails, and I don't know if you-
I was supposed to talk to you about that Tuesday, last week.
You guys find locations?
Pretty much, you're looking for somebody to build them.
Okay. We've got a couple of different ones. Well, I'd like to talk with you about that, I have to, so.
Anything else?
The Climate Change, Climate Change Advisory Committee meeting for this month was postponed until this coming Thursday, and the speaker, kind of the invited speaker, the main thing on the item, the main item on the agenda is a speaker on the human health impacts of changing climate. And Mayor, I understand you won't be able to be there, and I have an unfortunate conflict, so I'm going to see what I can do to get those comments shared with the others.
All right. Under New Business, we have the item that was postponed off of the consent agenda for the board. And Michael Fierko, did you want to ask a question or address it?
I do. I spoke with Manager Cruzbeck a couple of weeks ago, and noticed that the southwest side corner of the intersection is getting flooded up by truck traffic that can't quite negotiate the turn, and that would be part of something that we would, that the town would adopt responsibility for should we take on the Russet Run right-of-way. And so I just want to make sure that we're aware of that and that we make sure that that is corrected before we take responsibility for it. Now, the solution, I'll have to do it for engineers, and we'll wait in on that.
Michael, I have one question. You are in that, is that in the circle where the possible sculpture will be?
That's right behind both ankles.
Okay.
So it's-
Up the side?
Subs.
Up the side, both ankles?
It's on the backside of it.
Oh, I see.
Thank you. Both ankles, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So this photograph is facing north, yeah, looking north at it.
The Subs Road, and the road that the town is about to take over for the purposes of getting around the DOT bureaucracy and dealing with the sculpture is Russet Run, which is the team there.
What's happening is they're running over, the trailers can't quite swing around there, so they're running over the sidewalk and the curb, and sooner or later, the sidewalk and the curb can break up.
All right. Thank you. Do we then need a motion to approve the resolution to accept Russet Run for maintenance by the town? To approve the resolution of intent to accept? And I believe that's necessary because then it will move the process along further so that Russet Run sculpture can be more definitively guaranteed to the artist that's producing it.
The process, you know, the process isn't a tight term. We would have, if you do approve this, we would have to submit this resolution to DOT. DOT would take him out to give approval. My hopes that in that time, we can execute the agreement, incorporate some of the comments if you so choose on the Russet Run, as well as the other conditions for maintenance. We had this, Michael and I had this argument due to the Boulevard, the nomenclature. Anyway, that, those features, those developments being made to the Chinatown.
I would call it an argument. It was a-
No, 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 no.
Discussion. And the man is using the word Boulevard to mean something that I recognize as a median. And so-
Did you see my definition of upper Midwest?
That's where I, that was my definition as well. So I acknowledge the fact that you were saying the same thing I was saying. This is, sorry, what's out?
I was just going to mention, the artist said that Edwin Pike is from Chatham County. I'm very excited to have, hopefully, one of the sculptures there.
It's a massively wonderful sculpture, and very expensive, and it was going to be one of the Chatham Park gifts to the Boulevard. Back to the road.
My question to approve the resolution of intent to accept Russet Run.
Move by Michael Fierko, I can invite that both and Foley goes. And favor pleasing, the question, aye? Those opposed. Motion carries you in. All right. Next is our old business with respect to the Northwood. The new business is Victorian site will lead us in a special site plan of the Eagle gas station and convenience.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have site plan SP 2017 to 2009. Eagles Management Corporation has submitted plans for review and recommendation. The site is located at 163 East Street in Zone C2 Highway Commercial. I would like to address Ms. Saunders's question about the historic district, because I know she's not alone, and understanding that we do have a historic district, but not knowing the details about our historic district. The Eagle site is surrounded by the historic district on each side, but it's not included in our historic district. And unfortunately, even if it were, we have no regulations on our historic district. It's a National Register District, not an overlay district. So we'll put this up, and I'll continue. The proposal is to use the 1.74 acre site as a restaurant, convenience store with gas pumps, and a car wash. The main structure totaling 4,769 square feet will be able to accommodate the convenience store and the restaurant. The pumps will be located behind the main structure and the proposed 960-foot square car wash, square foot car wash will be located along the eastern side of the property. Upon reviewing these plans, staff has reviewed the SEFAC parking calculations per our ordinance, the dimensions. We've also had the NCT, our district engineer from the NCT DOT, look at these plans, and he has said that there will be no additional roadway improvements required after looking at these plans. This is the lighting plan for the site. The fixtures that they have proposed meet our lighting requirements. They're full cutout fixtures. The foot candles proposed along the property lines are not above .5 foot candles, which is what our ordinance requires it to be lower than .5 foot candles. The minimums and the uniformity ratios are in line with our lighting ordinance as well. The landscape plan has also been reviewed in accordance with our ordinances. They are required to have a Type A opaque buffer along the northern side and a Type B semi-opaque buffer along the eastern side, which is- B semi-opaque buffer along the eastern side, which is the side with the BMB. They have actually placed type A buffers on both sides, so they are exceeding the requirements in our ordinance in that respect. They have met the street landscaping requirements, and they will be adding along improvementable mononic street sidewalk, which needed there. These are some elevations that have been provided. I would also like to address, in your memos provided, we added in a section about the allocation. They're still requesting the same amount, but our figures, I believe, say that we had an allocation of 75,000 gallons per day at our 80% capacity. We have had hydrostructures, since typing up your memo, we have had hydrostructures look at our allocation records, and they have actually given us numbers that say, as of today, at 80% capacity, we will be at 49, approximately 49,000. And at 90% capacity, we'll be at 124,000, which means if we allocate the Eagles their requested amount, we will then be at 42,000 at 80% capacity and 117,000 at 90% capacity. These are some more elevation that have been provided. The planning board reviewed these plans at their March and April meetings, and in a vote of five to zero, recommended approval. The plans for the site have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development or insist by the appropriate department, and staff is recommending approval with their request. The engineer and applicant are here if you would like to ask them any questions.
Questions by the board?
Victoria, I have one, I have two. You said the B-type buffer that was in the plans here has been changed to A.
Yes.
And that's on the east side and north side?
Mm-hmm.
And refresh my memory on that A buffer?
Ours is a little bit different than what we were talking about before with the MUPD, but it's still generally the same idea. I believe you have to have, it has to be opaque up to six feet and have an intermittent, intermittent visual obstructions up to 20 feet. And they've met that with, they're going to have a six-foot tall fence on all around the property boundaries, and then they'll have trees and shrubbery as well. Staff has ensured, checked the shrubbery and the vegetation and made sure that it's going to meet the height requirements when it's fully grown.
Is that a six-foot privacy lane?
Yes.
And I assume the chain link on the back end, so it'd be all took down?
I think they're going to leave that, if like-
New wood. Ray Watson, structural site design and engineer for this project, on the east side will be a wood fence, finished on both sides. Plan is to leave the existing fence along the road boundary at this time.
The existing broken down chain link thing is going to be left?
That is what we were proposing, so yes.
That's, that looks pretty bad, I was over there this morning. Because that backs up to residential, right in there.
Sorry, sir, I just thought we were checking, now we are putting in new wood fence on that side.
Okay.
But again, finished wood on both sides, I'm sorry, I formed your arm.
No, that's, I, that's better. It did look pretty bad about there.
So the chain link would be removed, sir?
Yes, sir.
This is really a question for the planning department. I know that the planning board expressed concern about environmental issues, about how effective the proposed capture system would be, about what would happen to the oil laden water that continues to drip onto town roads once the cars exit the lot. I'd like to hear what you told the board, because that is also a concern that I have.
Well, I'm not an engineer, so I don't handle that, but our stormwater engineer, while he was here, did review these plans to the full extent, and if you would like, I believe the gas efficiency applicant is expert on how their car wash will handle runoff from the cars and the oil, he probably can tell you about it.
The stream that's underneath the parking lot, what my understanding is, it feeds into Robinson Creek. And if Robinson Creek is compromised because of this, it could cause problems for our purpose. So I'm really concerned about that.
One thing that we are doing, and I brought one copy tonight, the question was asked, we are placing two proprietary water quality devices, one located in this area, one located in this area, which capture those solid solids, and also some hydrocarbons, I'll just pass this around. It's certified by the state, I think it's certified every year since 2010, also certified by other state agencies. There's a maintenance plan that was submitted to staff as part of this and a maintenance agreement. So these water quality devices handle hydrocarbon runoffs, I think, we said about 98% effectiveness. We are also decreasing the amount of impervious area on the site, which in turn will run off from the site, and just water flow also helps in that situation. I hope that answers your question.
So what kind of maintenance is required to keep it at that 98% effectiveness?
I have to go back and check that. What it is, is a periodic maintenance, they have to go back visually inspected, they have to clean out debris, they have to clean out cement in this, they have to get vacuum trucks to clean it out. So it is something, and the agreement is to be signed by the owners for a permitting process, so I have to go in there and get them maintenance, generally is after rainfalls, I believe, more than about an inch, and if not, about every three months.
I think we'll be monitoring that.
I don't know how the staff monitors that, that's something, since the agreement, I don't know, I have to be honest with you, how that is handled internally.
So was the town given data about this, or is this just going to stay in the hands? You sound like you don't have any-
I don't know. I'll have the town receive records back on the maintenance version from now.
Okay, that's interesting. I'm really surprised to hear the DOT did not think that this would impact traffic, because already the traffic, I avoid, even sometimes the grocery stores further down the street, because it's so difficult to get out of there without a street light, without a stoplight. So it's hard to imagine that this would not cause the traffic problems.
I share that concern.
Yeah. Ms. Bayla, when we talk for DOT, what was the reason?
I sent him the plans and said, can you take a look at these? Are they going to need to do anything if this one caused problem? And he replied back to me that there would be no roadway improvement required after living at the site plan, so.
That's really difficult. I mean, I'm a guy over there, you know.
I think there's going to be a lot more curving, cross traffic curving, and out of traffic curving from east and west. And constituent cheered with me that he had personally tested it and tried to left-hand turn while heading east, and on several occasions it was three-minute, four-minute, five-minute wait. And so I think at the very minimum, we're probably going to see DOT needing to do a middle turn lane on this street, which I think we probably have a pavement for it, but it will have the consequences.
I can only tell you other engineers, I'm not a traffic engineer, so.
Can you just look at?
Let's put the plan up.
Can you show me where on this map where the underground string is located?
Underground street, let's just hit volume twenty.
So you're proposing actually two, two stormwater, I don't know what to call them, but conveyances in order to address that, you're going to replace that system, I think, is that right?
Existing pipe in this area.
Pouring out, or just left and ground?
No, it will be replaced. We're thinking up for this inlet there, where you're at, it's tied back into this one here. So it would be one water quality device to this area because of the way it's raining a lot. Second water quality device to this area because of the way we're raining downstream There is not an easy and only existing pipe. We are, because we're dedicating this to the water, easy, only restructuring, so that is one of the things that is a little bit different with the pipe now. And we did also analyzing the pipe, look at the upstream development, we decided the pipe can take care of all the runoff that's currently coming upstream. I hope that answered some of your questions.
Have you analyzed the pipe going across this street?
No, we have not, because we're actually decreasing the amount of water leaving the site, because we've decreased the amount in this area.
Well, I just noticed that you're putting in a 36-inch pipe, and it's tied to a 30-inch pipe that's tied in. Has DOT looked at that situation? Now, I don't know.
No, I just sent him the whole package of the plans, so he's seen what you've seen.
I understand that it came to light during the planning board meeting that the owner has proposed change in operation of the car wash, which was overriding into the plans that our engineer reviewed, be a recycling system, water recycling system. His plan is not to stick with that, is that correct?
I understand that is one of the things, because of the quality of the car wash and recycled water, Mr. Bayla can address this more further, that with just the quality of the wash, these decisions may not use retained water on the car washes.
And Ms. Bayla, how does that address the allocation, which you were referring to at the start, or the sewer applications?
The sewer allocation.
No, that's included. Okay, that is included, any overage will be not recycled.
There is the unit who wrote that report.
No, there will not be changes in that.
I forgot the two numbers, after the maintenance issue.
I have a question for the maintenance, I will see if I can find some information and report it back, and then see if I can answer your question. We're, they're still circling this way around?
Does the package, are the post-it notes in it?
Yes, package and post-it notes in it. And I will look and see.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to defer consideration of the site plan review until after consultation with town attorney.
Motion by John Bonnet.
Second.
Second is by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries you in. Thank you. If you'll get those additional, get that additional information, that would be great.
What additional information, is that this one?
It's in your hand.
Okay, this, okay. Just get this back to you, or the maintenance?
The maintenance would be another issue, but that was a very complex memo, and I didn't really have a chance to absorb it. Thank you. Next item is the Northwood MUPD rezoning. Victoria Bayla will continue to give us information with respect to this. This was from, reporting to public hearing, I have that one.
This is rezoning 2017-04, Northwood MUPD. Pico Partners is proposing to rezone approximately 91 acres located along the western side of US 15501, just north of the 64 VIPAPs, from RA2 Presidential Agriculture to MUPD mixed-use plan development. This parcel has been zoned RA2 since the late 1980s. The future land use plan is designated as property for commercial, and the surrounding properties are zoned MUPD to the south, to the north, and to the west, there are properties zoned RA2, while properties to the east are zoned C2s, EU, and PDD. Staff finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the future land use plan, and that this parcel presents a suitable location for the MUPD district, as these parcels are located at the corner of two highways. The parcel is positioned directly north of an existing MUPD and west of mixed-use development in the Chatham Park PDD, also enhancing its location suitability for an MUPD. A public hearing was held on January 22nd. There were no citizens who spoke at this hearing. Commissioner Fierko showed interest in the inclusion of language noted in the staff recommendation with the amendment that there be no landscaping requirement, so walls with artistic elements. The planning board considered this rezoning at their meeting on February 5th and March 5th, 2018. The board posed questions regarding traffic patterns around the site and requested a larger buffer, as discussed earlier. The board found that the request was consistent with the future land use plan, and in a vote of five to zero, recommended to approve. This MUPD came before the Board of Commissioners at the March 12th meeting, where some changes were requested by Commissioners, and the master plan has since been amended, and is back before the board tonight. If you have any questions, we have, can this be your chance to-
Questions by the board?
No, I'll, well, I got two I don't know to break up, but I'd say that all of my comments that I made about last week were, make it satisfactory to address. But I do want to make sure I've got clarity on two issues, well, one issue, and the other I'd just like to talk for additional commitment that, while I think that my comments have addressed, I want to follow through, add it, edit one bit of text to get it exactly the way I think it is. But the first I want to talk about is that exhibit, or Figure A, do we have the road improvements available for? Is that Figure A?
This is why I have to-
There's a title to it.
That's Figure Two.
That's Figure Two? I think we were given a document called Figure A, and it says, except for, I'm assuming improvements to school access, which is part of-
I'll have it.
That's what it says.
This is what it says on the page.
Looks essentially exactly the same, yeah. And it's my understanding that all of these improvements shown will be made prior to the first CEO. That was what mine was committed to us. So I think the language says, the way it says that, though, is it talks about the improvements identified in the TIA, which I think are graphically represented here. I just would like to make sure that we can make, that we make reference to the improvements in the TIA and as shown on Figure A, because I don't want to wrestle through TIA, 100 pages thick, to find out what we're talking about. Can you look this map? Uh, page eight, last seconds of the second paragraph. And the other item had to do with making sure that the open space, usable open space is open to the public, in many ways, the open space is open to the public. I think there's verbiage that said that, but there's one spot on page twenty-one, item C four, I'd like for it to say is legally and factually accessible to the public, which presently it says accessible for the intended users. And with that, I'm, I think it meets the requirements.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Bradley or, or Mr. Ashness, um, it was actually, Mr. Ashness, in our last conversation, I had asked if you might give, uh, some consideration, um, before we get to site plan, um, for, uh, maybe a curb on that major east-west, the earth there, possibly giving the opportunity to preserve a few more of those existing larger diameter trees? Any thoughts on that, any additional thoughts on that?
I think, uh, what I mentioned, that the last meeting was that, um, the next submission would be the subdivision base, which precedes individual site plans, and that we would actually have more detailed information to base alignments on. I'm sure we can put some, um, shape to that road and then look at that, but it, it would be better with more detailed information, so I think the subdivision submission would be appropriate.
So, it's my guy, you may, you're talking about curb in, in response to some trees, some trees.
Yes, hopefully to curb around some of those and increase the tree say. There's two large clusters, well, three large clusters, you've, uh, captured two of them.
And it said that aside is street government protection areas.
And there's a third smaller area that, it just looks like it could fairly easily be avoided with a, uh, twenty, thirty foot curb, just despite the urgency of that road.
I'll certainly take a look at what Mark said, what Mark said when we got to the, get to the more fine developments.
Very good. Thank you.
Further questions?
This is something that probably come up on the site side too, but I've had several people who've been Northwood who have used trails that are currently on that property and they wanted to know if they'll still be able to use trails from Northwood, and I guess that's an issue of, um, that's something that could be changed.
Well, you'll have sidewalks, which you wouldn't have before, so those sidewalks are a trail. No.
They're gonna have better trail.
That's right. And then there's that area in the front, we don't have that picture of, with, uh, park area pretty significant.
Right, and there's, there's three white spaces there, so that one, okay.
Did you say there being no fencing, um, there?
Where?
Around here, Northwood.
Between the high school era, area and that apartment complex.
I don't know that there may be some fencing, but I, again, we haven't gotten, that's really one of the site plan issues then.
They would be able to access, like, trail, I guess, through the road if you.
Correct. You come in on the access main roads on the sidewalks and get to various open spaces, which is, I think, why Commissioner Fioco wanted to make sure that it's public access.
Do we have any questions? Any further questions or a motion?
I'll approve with those two, a lot of patients.
Oh, uh, a consistency statement, of course. Would you amend your motion to approve a consistency statement?
I will do that.
Will you, uh, absolutely. So it's been moved by Michael Fioco and seconded by Pamela Baldwin to approve the consistency statement. Are there further questions or is the board ready to vote? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on. Now, the motion to approve with the page eight and page twenty-one meant by Michael Fioco?
It's a move.
Moved by Michael Fioco? Okay. Seconded by Pamela Baldwin, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on. The next item is the planned unit development referred as New South.
Okay. Um, this is special use permit two zero one seven dash zero five and subdivision two zero one seven dash zero four. Orange Development Group has submitted plans for a planned unit development, or PUD, located along the northern end of North Masonic Street. The applicant is proposing a PUD consisting of forty-two townhomes in the Art and zoning District where PUDs are required, are required to get a special use permit. The townhomes will be located on the two most northern parcels totaling five point four eight acres. The maximum density for a PUD is twelve units per acre. The proposed density for this PUD is seven point seven units per acre. The proposed minimum lot size is fifteen hundred square feet and the proposed minimum lot width is eighteen feet. A public hearing was held on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Support for the project was shown through comments in favor of high-density residential close to our downtown. Other comments demonstrated concerns over stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties, traffic heading through the Chathamville, Chatham Mills property, and whether or not Masonic Street and intersection with Thompson Street would be able to accommodate future increases in traffic volume. The subdivision flat and special use permit request was received by the planning board at their meeting on April second, two thousand and eighteen. The board posed questions regarding the widening and capacity of Masonic Street connectivity to adjoining parcels, stormwater measures, and noted that this project is similar in nature to infill, infill development ideas. After some discussion, the board recommended to approve in a vote of five to zero. These plants have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development orders by the appropriate department, and staff is recommending approval of the request for the flat. Also, um, the same goes, we were talking earlier about the allocation, so the, the allocation request is the same, but I gave you the numbers previously. Do you want the numbers, um, say that this is approved and Eagles is approved? Would you like to hear the numbers after what we have left, after this allocation?
Yep.
All right. So with both of those site plans approved, uh, at eighty percent capacity, we would be at twenty-seven thousand, and at ninety percent capacity, we'd be at a hundred and two thousand. That's what.
Mr. Doug, can I?
Yes. Up to eighty percent capacity.
The ninety percent figure is what, Victoria?
A hundred and two thousand.
Questions by the board?
I guess I have a few that have been sent in to me by, uh, I don't know if this is even the right time, but, uh, a couple of questions were sent to me by specific citizens. I know this is a special use, it's just a time to bring these up, maybe to the applicant or whoever, but I'll just read over my quick, um, will any of these units be affordable housing? What has happened to affordable housing projects previous discussed in that area? Has the traffic study been completed? What is the local track record of the applicant and developer? And I had brought that up myself regarding this other two, uh, developments that Orange Builders have here in town.
If the applicant questions, that's the question.
Hello, I'm Landon Lovelace, I'm here from the project. I'll, I'll take the first two, with regard to affordable housing, um, and the previous projects. There, it's currently no affordable housing plan within this development. We do have a mix of unit sizes, which is also a comment that was, was at the public hearing, that, uh, is there a mix in unit size? So we do have a mix in unit size from eighteen to up to twenty-two foot, um, which will help offer different, um, levels of entry into this, but at, at this point, there is not affordable housing plan, uh, based on the dirt. It just, right now, it doesn't work. Both Mr. Dashner and myself come from a background of affordable housing development, um, it's something that we both feel is extremely important, um, the mechanisms by which that should come to fruition is something that we could sit here and, and debate, I think, for another night. So it's, that kind of segues into the second question about prior projects, which I, I understand some were affordable housing, um, and why those maybe didn't come to fruition. I can't speak specifically to why those didn't come to fruition, but I know that, um, the typical avenues for affordable housing is a, um, pretty highly contested, you have to make applications year by year, and there's a few different ways to get that money, and it's, it's, uh, it's pretty hard to get. So I can't speak to exactly why this hadn't panned out before. But as far as affordable housing, we're not offering a specific, like, sixty percent AMI, eighty percent AMI, but we are offering different housing units, and, uh, we, we anticipate and hope that this will fill a, a much needed housing product with townhomes that, there are no townhomes in Pittsburgh, so have some of those smaller units like that. We're hoping, we'll, we'll hopefully get some of that eighty percent AMI or some of the, you know, higher end of what would be considered affordable housing.
And I'll, uh, speak to previous projects, which I'll, uh, assume is a reference to the Davy Street project, which, um, which you guys approved now a year and a half ago, and were kind enough to grant an extension on. And we are continuing to mobilize for that, and Landon and I had a conversation about that just last week, and have received bids and are looking forward to getting started here, very shortly.
Michael, what about the, uh, East Corn Wallace, is it, pretty much almost standstill, I guess?
Um, it's changed, so actually just permitted two houses there, um, at, on East Corn Wallace, but the original parcel that, that you guys had approved for the, the original pocket neighborhood concept, actually acquired a couple adjacent parcels to that, so, um, the, uh, the, the overall plans, I'd say, for that area, just, it no longer really made sense to have the, the small development there. So right now, we're, um, getting ready to start a couple of just, uh, single lot, traditional single lot homes right along East Corn Wallace there.
So the project has changed on Corn Wallace?
On Corn Wallace, yes.
I had, uh, several questions that, Landon, I want to thank you and appreciate your availability and approachability and, and passing those out. I learned a lot, and I appreciate you letting me share my perspectives. One thing that I neglected to ask about, um, and was reminded of later, was something that is off of your project site, um, but I think is still a concern for this board, and that is the scouring that's happening on the west side of the street down closer to, um, Thompson. The, the open drainage gutter, um, dish, uh, next to, um, DS's car, townhome. There is some real scouring down there, friends, and, and before it goes underneath Thompson Street. And, uh, I guess the question is for staff, how, uh, how do towns and municipalities undertake those kinds of repairs? Aren't they ordinarily dealt with? Because I think it's gonna get worse.
Mr. Grant, have you had a look at that?
Well, I, I had, I can, I think you have two questions. One is probably for, for this project and, um, uh, the way that it was designed with free valley, so there's a culvert that goes underneath, um, Masonic Street right now.
Up your end.
Up at our end in our project, and I'll address that first, and then I think I may be able to speak a little bit to the municipal portion, um, without wanting to speak out of my expertise or the one I turn, but there's an existing culvert that comes, picks up drainage area from basically from Chatham Mill to a couple of parks to south, comes underneath Masonic Street. Uh, we had gone back and forth a few different times, um, and I, I think this is, uh, not an unfamiliar site in Pittsburgh, I think we saw it earlier on the Eagles, there's a kind of an outfall from an offsite that shoots out to a stream or a pipe or something that, you know, it's a drainage away from a long time ago that just kind of keeps moving on as, as the name has felt. So when Masonic Street, whenever that was put in, there's a culvert put underneath, and since Masonic Street sits down lower than Thompson Street, that runoff doesn't necessarily run down the ditch, but it comes way down to this project site, and it comes to our site, ultimately making its way down to, um, the creek, the bumper stream that's in the southeast corner of the site. So, Mr. Fioco brought up a comment at the public hearing with regards to, uh, our current design, which, which had that part going back to, where I would probably argue, uh, rightfully it should be, which is on the west side of Masonic Street in that ditch. And we have looked at our frontage and looked at the capacity of the ditch, but the question was asked, did we look all the way down to Thompson, because it seems that there's some, some known issues down there of a scour? And the answer is, we did not go all the way down to Thompson, but we had also considered and have changed the plans that would, uh, based on timing with the public hearing being two weeks ago, and the planning board last week haven't had a chance to make the changes to the plan, but would like to add that as a condition of approval tonight, that we, we go back to taking that runoff that we were diverting to the western side of Masonic. And we'll go ahead and take that into the system, um, and bring it through the southern commercial piece, and then before it goes into the wet detention pond, we'll split it out. So the runoff that's supposed to go to the pond will, an amount that's, would currently be just going through our property anyway, will continue to just bypass the pond. That's, uh, that's gonna not further any existing issues down Masonic Street. As far as how municipalities typically, I, I've seen, um, there's gentlemen here that have much more experience in years than I do, but a lot, a lot of municipalities will have capital improvement project funds, um, and their, their engineering departments will identify areas where they'll have citizen complaint lines, things like that, and there's money that will go into coffers, um, specifically for problem areas like that. I believe before Fred left, he set up a, a stormwater program, and we pay review fees, and we pay stormwater management fees that are part of this, that we pay as part of this project. Some of them come in at review, some of them come in at type of permit, um, so my guess is some of that was before thought to start having some sort of fund to do projects like that. Hopefully that answers the question as far as this project not exacerbating an existing issue down Masonic.
Anyone else have questions on that?
No, I think that's the proper way to manage that. It's approved, there now, Masonic is not seeing it, Thompson's not seeing that water, so it's appropriate for it to continue to do so, otherwise, I think the analysis should be done, and if improvements would be required, then, you know, I think the project is for the entity responsible for making those improvements. Where it is now, it won't change the situation, if there is an existing problem, the town should be doing.
Further questions?
I'm concerned about traffic on this project. I mean, I'm a favorite project, but I'm concerned about that there's really no refund thing going out, the other is taking it through a parking lot, um, and that's gonna be an issue that the town will have to face forward unless there's another way to hook up, have to say, I wish, off to the back of the property, Chatham Mills, or Feral Street, or.
So, yeah, I, I share that concern, and, um, one of the things that I was pleased to learn, uh, or have really emphasized, was that in that southeast corner, uh, of this project, um, there is a stubbed out, uh, true way that, um, in future, uh, the adjacent property owner, I believe that was Mr. Regan?
Mr. Regan, Regan, he may choose to accept that and tie that in himself with small street. I think that makes an awful lot of sense, and the fact that it will be stubbed out right to property line leaves open that opportunity in future. Because I think that we have a real problem with east-west, the lack of east-west thoroughfares in our town, and it's a bunch of alleyways and shortcuts and whatnot right now, but that's something this project can't really address, can't fix, but it leaves open the door for something in future. And I would be very enthusiastic about that adjacent property owner making improvements or working with the town to make improvements to the small street to pride that relief, because I think we are going to see some problems potentially, you know, short backups at the intersection of Masonic and Thompson. Probably no major problems, but yeah, so I always say a thought like that. It does put one more thing kind of down the road for your fund.
Well, essentially, is it not an Indian street?
It seems that. I mean, I think it's so hard to get through the mill that not many people choose to try and use that thruway, and that makes sense. It's with speed bumps, it shouldn't, people should try and go around on larger thoroughfares, proper city-sized thoroughfares.
And that helps having, you know, make people within walking distance of Chatham Mill that will be good for Chatham Mill and for your business.
So what did you discuss about the thruway, since we're on that topic already, at Chatham Mill, which people do cut for? Did you all discuss anything, owner of Chatham Mill, that becomes some type of revolution? What are you going to do about that?
We've not had, we've not had a discussion, and I'm happy to share my thoughts about it. Ultimately, right now, it's a public street that's serving a private business besides a couple of single-family residential neighborhoods. So I do think, I think we spoke to a little bit at the public hearing, I think that development along this corridor, and I feel like that the Chatham Mill is a huge anchor, and I think that this project will be a large catalyst, if done properly. It'll be a large catalyst for that whole corridor down to the sixty-four bypass. That will help spur on, increase the tax base, and help start making some of those improvements come to the forefront. Other people will come in and will develop in there, and will have a lot of improvements to do along the way. As we mentioned, this part is a special use permit for specifically the forty-two town homes. We're also looking at future commercial on the southern piece of that, which we anticipate would generate a little bit more traffic, and we would anticipate with the amount of trips that that generates, that there probably would be some additional work that has to be done. So as far as folks cutting through the Chatham Mill, that is not a passing of blood, because that's not really got anything to do with us, that's an enforcement kind of...
It may not have anything to do with you.
Sure.
But your project will certainly generate additional traffic.
Sure, I agree with that.
And the Chatham, you know, the Chatham Mill's owner has a right to his opinion in reference to the effect that would happen when you're cutting through on his property. So yes, it may not have anything specifically to do with that, but yours will generate additional traffic.
And I think...
Then that traffic will be good traffic. I mean, it's...
Should be. And to Mr. Bond's point, and to just the general philosophy about traffic, it's, you know, a path of least resistance. If folks have to go one way and take fifteen left turns and go over five speed bumps to get to five oh one, they're probably going to go down to Thompson.
Yeah. Go ahead and adopt that.
That's how I make the decision. I'd like to think I'm a fairly rational actor when I'm on the wheel, and the only time that I choose to go that way is when I actually have business to do.
I'm one to that conquest. A lot of people go through that.
Really, like a lot of folks do, you did this for a time.
Sid Alexander, did you have a comment you wanted to make with respect to that?
No, ma'am, I think the concerns have been presented to the board. We have not had a conversation with these folks. We're happy to do so, but it is a significant concern for us and was straight out. I also agree that, I'm not sure there's much we can do at this stage legally in terms of the special use application. We think that this development is a good one for Pittsburgh. We're very concerned about traffic and what happens to Chatham Mills, but we're not fully in the moment as it's presented currently, but it's going to be back in front of you another time, folks.
Yeah, if you're out there supporting, you need to make sure everything goes well.
And we're happy to try and work with them at the appropriate time to see what we can do as they develop Masonic, as we deal with pedestrian bypass, things you talked about. But we are very concerned about what it would do coming into the back door of Chatham Mills.
Is it not private property?
It is private property.
It's not a public property?
No, it's not. We could stop it there. We could technically put up signs, in my opinion, that says private property and no access. We could even block it. That's not in our interest, it's not in the interest of the town of Pittsburgh. How we work it out, what you do with small street and the stubout, what you do with Thompson going to fifteen and five oh one, those are all major issues. And of course, we've still got a significant portion of Chatham Mill's property that will be developed over time, which may or may not result in another means of access to fifteen five oh one, a little further north. So a lot of things in play here.
There are, and I appreciate this comment. I do want to point out just for clarity that we did in fact have a couple of conversations with the owners, actually in design stage, to try and work together on some of those connectivity issues, so. I guess I'll just leave it there. We'd be happy to have more and continue to. Thank you.
I'm very pleased about the park, and I think we talked about this before, but that will be open to other residents who live on that street.
We would love for it to be, and I see Paul's here tonight, so maybe that conversation can move forward, but, you know, we have zero hesitancy to make that open to the public. If Pittsburgh wants to take it on as a public park, that'd be okay too. I think right now it's meant to be a private amenity as part of the HOA, but I think we could definitely work with the town staff to make it accessible to the public. One of the other things that I saw Mr. Ship here tonight, and Mr. Bond's mentioned this as well, was just kind of the forethought of seeing some of the coming tides of electric vehicles and trying to provide electrical vehicle charging stations, and how we might best go about that. And there's a few local area municipalities that are a little bit larger that have done some stuff, areas done some stuff, government's done some stuff. Those are generally provided free of charge to the public, and those are kind of still in their pilot programs. Mr. Bond's informed me that it's part of the VW settlement that North Carolina may be getting a couple million dollars. My guess is they're probably already earmarked for studies or something, but we are certainly not opposed to doing some EV charging stations here, and I've actually had conversations with Duke in the last couple of days just to understand, infrastructure-wise, what does it take to put these things in? And the good news is that it's not anything outside of what they would already be putting in for, to run power to any of these buildings. So basically, when you decide where you want a station, you go set a freestanding meter, they'll come out and charge it, and then you get, you know, you buy your meter and get it set. So we're definitely open to that. I think we'll be looking at it. I think, you know, you're probably right, the market will probably dictate that pretty soon, and, you know, the demographic who's going to buy here may or may not dictate that, and if they do, we're happy to put in as many as are reasonable. I think there's still a lot of figuring out who pays for it, and how do you, you know, are they, are they private for each unit with an assigned space, and they kind of have to pay their own electricity for it? It's something that we could potentially get some grant money for, that Chatham County or Pittsburgh might be willing to work with us to put some of these in as a pilot program. Certainly when we develop the commercial portion in the future, that's going to definitely be something that we would like to look at, so.
Have you put any further thought into the idea of the conduit? Skip the charger equipment investment and just lay a conduit?
So from my understanding, there's not even conduit required. They will literally put a service, it would be no different than setting a, setting an individual service for a home. That may be my ignorance and the little bit that I do know in brief conversations I've had with them. But it's kind of like when they go to, when they go to trench, I think there's a timing element to it, so maybe we're just, maybe it's semantics. When you say conduit, maybe we need to put a conduit from their trench to a potential location, so when we do go to tap it...
So you don't have to stir grass law?
Well, generally, they'll run, they'll run the power behind. Generally, the diutose will be run in a slight strip or a grass strip, and try not to put them underneath a horse gate. Sometimes it's hard in a, in a spot like this where there's a lot of, where you've got sidewalks put up to the parking and that kind of thing. But we're willing to do it. We definitely think it's a good idea, and, you know, we're probably a year and a half out before Duke would ever even be in there, as if we started soon, before Duke would even be in there putting power in. So I think in that development timeframe, we can identify locations and at least get something set up to try something out.
Yeah, some questions. So talking earlier today through email with Jeff Jones about the future spaces, and I'm informed that the future commercial space is not actually within the project, that it will be done through site plan at another time.
Correct.
That's the portion that's a C1 zone.
Correct.
And I was asking about the other piece that is future development, that is included in the condition or the plant unit development, but you haven't designated any density on that parcel, so you'll have to amend the plant unit development to develop that track. And I understand some of the complications of the work, live units, and how we really wouldn't allow that in this zoning district, so it makes sense to kind of work through that with staff to get to a point where that's a permissible use, because I think that's a great use. So with that said, and I'll explain why I think you've got those on there, just to document how the stormwater's going to perform. You're saying in this parcel, I got a maximum impervious surface of this amount, therefore the pond is designed to accommodate it. So that's why it's important to have it there, but not actually be part of the project.
That's correct. Basically for both areas, for the live work and the commercial work, allocating the impervious allowable for the future development. Now, when we come in, it may be less than that, which is just, which is even better. We'll have even more protection stormwater-wise than the pond slightly oversized if we don't.
So it's a new regional device?
Yeah, we're trying to think forward, not just to these forty-two units, but to what we might be doing in the next two years or four years.
So we talked about phasing last time, and the phasing lines were mentioned as really for plating purposes, so...
Correct.
Let me understand, are all of the roadways and all of the sidewalks shown, going to be built at one time?
They will be.
Okay.
They will be, and the, the units may not be built at C1, but I would like to add another condition if we can to the approval, that we add a note to the plan that mentions that the trash and recycling receptacles will be built and in place and functional prior to the first CO and first, in phase one.
Yeah, and I was also going to include the clubhouse.
So we currently have the clubhouse as conditioned upon the first CO in phase two.
Phase two.
It's a large expense.
So those phase one folks who are living in this community, and phase two never happens, don't get the benefit of the required improvement. That's what I, that's my concern. I would think it more appropriate to be working in phase one. I know it's a covered structure with two bathrooms, maybe some storage, but...
And a playground.
Well, I'm, I don't, yeah, I'm saying the clubhouse. Sure, that's what I'm saying.
I guess if we're going to go that route, I would ask, and I would love to be able to just hash out language, I would like to ask maybe that it be pushed to the eleven CO or the fifteen CO or somewhere. We're still early on in development, but there's...
How many are phase one?
There are twenty-one at phase one, so maybe do eleven, that's halfway there.
Okay.
Get the, get the builder, get some positive cash flow generated on the project before they go and put in a pretty expensive cover shelter.
So the refuse recycle, all of that will be constructed? That answer is, that's a pretty easy answer.
That's it.
Great. So let me ask you then, some of the other phasing ideas. When will the five-foot gravel trail and arch bridge be constructed?
So we were looking at all of the amenities at the first phase, or the first CO in the second phase. I have no problem with conditioning that at the same time with the eleven CO. I think that, the good news about the natural area is it's already a beautiful natural area, you know, doing in and doing some overbrushing and bushhogging and putting a trail in is not. It's something that we can get for the folks that are going to be living there early on. We can get them to join that right away.
Yeah, okay. Technical question, the eight-foot sidewalk along the frontage will add some interest. It's going to be public insider property, who's maintaining?
That is a public sidewalk, and it's in the...
It's in the...
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Landon, you're going to like this one. So I think all of the impervious surface is going to the pond?
Almost all of the impervious surface.
Almost all. What part is it?
The, the back of the units along the eastern...
Forty, twenty-nine through forty-five. So they will just...
The back half of those will pull off.
Back half of those roots, because the gable will run north.
That's correct, because of the drop-off behind those. And that, that comes up to the, comes right now, that's where Reagan had that we address. If you look at the pre-bos drainage, it's actually reduced greatly, even though there is some runoff going there, it's going to be reduced by a quarter of what it was pre-development.
Got it, okay. What is the area north of unit twenty-nine? It's not hashed, it's not called out as anything?
Right, right now, that's just part of, any of the space that's outside of lots is basically HOA space, and the reason that's there is just to be able to make up grade to ultimately tie to the mill at some point in the future when it does get stubbed up there.
Yeah, now, I was curious, I mean, have you studied the road extension to the mill? Because there's about eight feet of grade change right there.
Sure.
I mean...
We have.
Can you make a connection?
We, we can, we have, and I think that's part of the ongoing conversations with, with Chatham Mill, and ultimately, we have no, we have no control over adjacent development and what is done, but we, we set stubs up to the greatest extent possible to allow for future development.
Yeah. Now, it makes sense, it makes sense the plan for the ability to construct it, and I'm curious, have you looked so far as to see, can you actually build it within the right-of-way?
We have, and I think there's ongoing conversations that have kind of stalled about getting additional grading easements off-site.
Yeah, yeah.
Up to the north. There's, there's a knob that kind of sits right north of the property, so without knowing what future development might be up there, the answer from grading say that we've looked at is, yes, you can construct it. We could, we could probably offer additional grading easements outside the right-of-way, but I think the majority of the grading would have to be done on the, on the project sector of the land anyway, which would be the rodent, and they don't need easements to get there.
Yeah, what I was concerned about is the likelihood is that Chatham Mill will want to make the connection in the future.
Sure.
And they all want to be able to build the road.
Sure.
And yet, we'll need construction easements on those parcels that you control.
Right, well, that's where we've got it, we've got it with the wall, and where it's graded now, they shouldn't need these in the future. But we can, I mean, I'm happy, we're happy to provide outside of the building envelopes or lots, we can provide a twenty or thirty-foot gradient, and it's, it's an area right now that's just going to be HOA space again.
I think that would, that would be a good thing to do, because I can definitely imagine cutting eight feet, that's sure a big problem, staying within a tight confines.
We can add a twenty-foot slope piece on either side of that right-of-way through there.
Further questions from the board?
Oh, actually, I do have one of them. Could you add to the narrative? You've got both images of buildings. Can you label those images as row houses and/or a live workspace? I know they are conceptual, but I'd like to be able to know which ones, which that I want to have, because at some point...
Because at some point, you'll propose something and Jeff's going to look back at the image and see if it's close.
Sure.
Right?
That's an easy one. I'd only mentioned a number, four or five different conditions or things tonight should, before we take a vote. Obviously, if there's any more questions, but I think it'd be helpful to just kind of run back through those. One, that wants to make sure that we've got everything. Make sure we're speaking the same language.
Did you want to go over that?
Sure, I can, I can take a spot. So we're going to, we're going to condition any of the amenities on the side, including the wrecked shelter, the ground trail, the small little carscape areas to the 11th certificate of occupancy in the first phase. We're going to add a 20 foot slope easement along the northern portion of road three. Sure, that's a good point. There's a, we said 11, but the, all the, all the buildings are seven units. Doesn't really make a lot of sense to do an 11. They're halfway through a building with.
You really want to do seven?
15 would be great.
Yeah, got it.
The 20 foot slope easement at the northern end of road three, outside of any town hall lot. That the culvert and runoff that's currently coming under Masonic can be bypassed and directed through the site rather than down the west side of Masonic.
So that's another way to say that you're keeping the culvert intact.
The culvert will stay intact, but it, it will change because we'll pick it up in a structure and have to bring it down.
Yeah.
But it will.
From one side of the road to the other, using existing pipe and then just.
That's right. So long as the existing pipe's in good shape and not laid back. We also had, I don't know if that needs to be a text amendment. We're definitely on board and willing and able to look at EV charging stations. And we've got time, that'll be prior to Duke coming in to those road around the line. And so we're open to suggest a text amendments if there is one. Otherwise, it's something that we're looking to do and I think tomorrow we will call for it. Did I miss him?
Yeah, your agreement was concerned more about the regression area. That could be open to the public.
To the public.
What's following, do you want it to be maintained out of town? I think you need to engage your parks and all that.
I will, but I want it to be a possibility then.
I mean, everything's open to the public. Nobody's going to knock it off. You ask them, are they going to be chained off or?
Well, sometimes even if it's not chained off, on location, which you know, we do not want people who are not.
Then you need to clarify what you want for public. Anything you need to engage your parks and play it all.
Do you like the piece of that, Paul?
Well, there's not necessarily a relationship between maintenance and access. Certainly restricted access for HOAs is a longstanding bad tradition in some places and perfectly appropriate in others. But the developer sounds open to that discussion and I'm happy to engage with him with direction from the board.
That would be fine, but well, on the way to the board.
In favor of keeping parks open and engaging in maintenance agreements, Paul, and the developer may. No?
We've got other, we've got other plans and engagement opportunities with folks that do community gardens. Like we said, there's going to be a community garden there. We would love to do, potentially do a piece of public work. All these things come into play when we're talking about maintenance and all these things. There could be some really good conversations.
And just to be sure, we talked about all of the roads, sidewalks, all of that is installed at one time. And that means water, sewer, storm drains, lighting, landscaping.
That's correct.
The whole.
That's correct.
And before the 15th CO.
So the, the amenities will be in place. So yes, they are. The, all of those utilities, paving, all that stuff will have to be in place for the first phase. Right, for the, for, yeah, before we can get a CO, we'll have to have that to access the first phase lot. So phase two lot may lag behind in getting the pavement and final lifting, those kind of things down. Because it's not necessary until you get to the CO.
But you are going to have pavement down and you'll be just doing the final lift on.
That, that is the intent.
Okay.
Yes.
You're going to bond all of it if you're not engaged?
Correct. It would be all per standard physical requirements. I assume that you all want to bond or hold something before you issue COs?
That's required, is it not?
Yes, ma'am. You only need to decide whether you want a public park or you want a private park with public access. There's a difference. If you don't have a public park, they're going to be paying fees to the town to put a park somewhere else or to pay for recreation somewhere else. So it makes a big difference in this. I mean, the preliminary subdivision is on, before you as well as this, this other proposal. So, and I don't think you've heard from Paul Moore that it's a suitable place for a public park. But I think that's the decision we need to resolve.
That doesn't seem like a decision we could make tonight without further conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's, you know, certainly our intent is that, that park, whether it's privately maintained or publicly maintained, be accessible to any and everybody who wants to enjoy it. So I feel like we can, we can have conversations with Paul and with you guys about, you know, if there's an interest in the town maintaining that, that's fine. If there's not, we can certainly envision the scenario where, where we would be maintaining it.
Yeah, I think the good mechanism by which we have there is, as Mr. Messick mentioned, there's a, there's also a recreation payment and loot that's required of 156 per acre or whatever, 6 square feet per unit. So there's some small amount, I think it's like a third of the acre, that would be due as a fee and loot. That I would see if, if, that's on the table as well.
Could conceivably be partial, it could be both, it could be some other private.
Sure.
I think what I have in the proposal is that it be private and that you make the payment as well.
That's what the proposal is.
And so I think, and what you're saying is make sure it's accessible to the public. So they could keep maintenance, be accessible to have a fund. Well, we can make that part of the stipulation of approval.
That'd be good.
With those stipulations, they're verified, and I think there are a few more now. But with those stated stipulations, they're allowed. Moved by Mike Field, here's a second, if I can help you from the above. Doug's his favorite, please, let's get right to the end, aye?
Aye.
First prepared, you know. Next is the review of the UDO, the unified development ordinance, and an update by our planner, Joe Jones.
Yeah, we'll be quick on this one. This, this is really leading to you all making some calendar choices as to our work session with both the town board and the land board being in attendance, and Roger, our consultant. Earlier today, I found a little goal for you all to go to the next three weeks or so of times. I know I've heard from the mayor and a couple of land board members. So as soon as I hear from a good, good majority of everyone, I will get that scheduled. Once that is scheduled and we hold the session or sessions, I just, I, I think you guys are going to want to have Roger more than two hours. Because that's all he's, he sort of is looking at for a work session. Because of his mind that it's been beat, that the UDO has been beat up quite a bit through module one and two. And that we are at now a time where the comments should be lessened. And we're ready to move forward, but I say work session or sessions. After these, we get to a point where we're all comfortable. Roger's is looking at doing two public review sessions. One during the week, maybe one on the weekend. That will be coordinated with staff and, and you all, you know, not necessarily need to be in attendance, but staff will be in attendance and we advertise that out. We will then move to a public hearing date and then hold that public hearing before you all. You will then send it to the planning board and then that, the plan board will then make recommendations. And then back to you all for adoption and then the actual effective date would probably be sometime in the future after that adoption date. Roger has put together a memo sort of outlining if we were to hit these dates, which probably not going to be able to hit those dates because it was all, I think the work session was next Monday night. However, I do have a few people who've said they can do next Monday. So if I, some chance over the next couple of days, people can do next Monday, then we'll do next Monday. And I'll, I'll be in touch with you all. But that's sort of the, the things that we can, that we are looking for for the UDO review.
I just haven't had a chance to look at my calendar.
Yeah, I figured as much.
I saw it.
Yeah, yeah. You didn't get it? Okay, I sent it to the email address that's on the website, the town's website, which was probably, okay. And I sent it to the one that's on the website as well. I know you were having email issues a few meetings together. This one went to, I think it's emailed. Yeah. Okay. And it should have been from me with just a link to the, to the survey, yeah. Okay, and, and reach out to me if you don't have it. I'll, I'll send it over to you, through email, yeah. But we'll, we'll get that scheduled as soon as possible and we'll look forward to that update.
Have you been keeping a list of all the things through the months when we said, oh, let us remember to do that with the UDO? I've got a few on my list, but not.
Some, some of them are things I think we can do with Roger and what our contract calls for. And then some things are, we are going to either have to do another contract with someone else or do it in-house or something like that. So yes, I'm, I'm. Add to it almost weekly. That's all I have for that.
Thank you. That brings us then to the additional element of public facilities to be discussed tonight. And before the meeting started, I was telling Jeff Jones that I thought this memo introduced me. This was an extremely helpful one. And so let us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll sort of walk through, walk through this, this element. If we recall back in 2016 when we got the memo of additional elements and we started the process of kind of talking about the various elements themselves, some being ordinance, some being policies, some being acceptance. Some of this, this element feels like acceptance and not ordinance. I'm not sure it's reading a whole lot of ordinance into this, this. But I'm, I'm reading a lot of, if, if we do X, the town will do agreement type language that you all may be seeing in other agreements that are before you for Chad Park, such as sewer or water. And a lot of those things would be, could be incorporated into this element as well. There are how, for some aspects of the element, that's sort of state reimbursement agreements. If there would be some, the way it reads now is if Chad Park does some extension of utilities, that we, they would be reimbursed. I'm not sure that's how the element is striving to read. I think maybe it's either speaking towards the special assessment district and that language needs to be put in here back in 2016 when this was first drafted. Maybe the special assessment district is not fully contemplated of how that would, would work and how that might be in, in an element of public facilities. Or there needs to be annual language that says when oversizing is requested by the town, there would be reimbursements of X. And that need, that could be in here as well. Whenever we do water, annual sewer request for them to oversize and how that's going to be reimbursed. So the applicant could, could certainly speak to their, their thinking on the two reimbursement issues. I have sent this to the fire department. Y'all have received those comments. Most of those were sort of related to making sure that they are able to utilize their own methodology for staffing needs and equipment needs and that none of their methodologies would be predicated on anything that's in this, this element. I've told them that this element really is an information gathering for us and fire and other folks who would utilize this for, as schools for information. And then things that we would get at the small area plan, such as number of houses, number of units that would be built over a period of time. Those are going to be used by us, staff, you all to make budget decisions, staffing decisions. And then same with fire. They'll be able to see year after year how many new residential units are anticipated, how many we've got in the past. Be able to make budget requests and equipment upgrades based off of that. Part of this element also kind of speaks to the need for additional fire and police stations and where those might be. So that's, that's something that we want to make sure that those things are taken care of to your, your liking in here. The school issue was, is going to be delayed until the next meeting. They would like to have some representatives here to be able to speak to theirs. I did include the minutes from the meeting that was, where the language that's in this draft was approved by the school board. So you all would see that. And then you'd be able to ask questions with school board and or Chad Park at the next meeting. And I invited Paul here because part of this public facilities is parks and recreation. And Paul put together some, some points to think about as it relates to the loo and then how we get to a number of parkland that would be given to the town at some point in time, which I think is a pretty big discussion point that you want to have with the applicant as Paul points out. If we accept fee and loot for greenways or parks that they may build, that they're going to want to take off of the 667 requirement that the master plan puts forward. Some of those things may have been taken care of with the master plan of allowances to do that or maybe able to do that. I just want you all to, to understand that 667 of publicly dedicated parkland may not be a real number. But to get built facilities today, you might get, you might get less, you're, you're going to get less than the 667. So I'm here, Paul's here, applicant's here to engage in some of those discussions. I don't think this will be one time done and we're back next time for approval. I think this one kind of is going to sort of marinate for a little while because there's a lot of agreements that you all are continuing to work through that might impact this, this element. But we wanted to put this on the table for discussion, kind of keep the momentum going on the elements. Any questions will leave initially. Otherwise, y'all can open up the floor to the applicant and ask questions of me or Paul. Thank you.
How do we want to approach this as far as questions concerned? Questions are concerned? We want to talk first with, with Paul Moore. Would that be a good way to start? Would that be a good way to start? I think one of the things that was so interesting in your memo was the discussion of the pre-development and post-development land value. And if you could, if you could sort of run over that quickly. Do you want to understand post-development is the ordinary way of designing?
Well, it's the ordinary way in Pittsburgh. It can be, there's no inherent way, but that's how our current ordinance is read, is for post-development, as is the vision you get. And that is anywhere from 50 to 60 some percent higher typically than pre-development value.
So that's the kind of value of the payment in lieu?
That's correct.
So basing it on the tax value after development versus pre-development, the value would be greater for the land. Therefore, each bit of land would generate that much more.
Do you have this thing in place now?
I'll take that as a draft.
I think we're all on the same page that our current ordinance is for post-development.
Post-development.
And that's what you're saying as well.
Establish the post-development per lot price for a recti.
So maybe the additional element is based on pre-development.
We might want to have a different conversation.
Right, well, that's the conversation we're having.
Yeah, that's why we pointed out. And we haven't used the mechanism in our current subdivision ordinance to analyze post-development on any subdivision of, I think it's engaging with an appraiser and going through a certain number of steps to get to that value. We envision it doing more of those as we continue to develop out. Right now, what we've been doing is charging folks based on the budget rate, which is $1,030 per lot.
But that was based upon the tax values with the, with the tax office. It's not just a number pulled out of air.
Right, but I, I think we have some ability to look at that number.
Questions by board for Paul or on any other aspect?
Well, I think several things you, you mentioned in the memo if you want to talk about any of those.
Yeah.
Well, one of the takeaways is certainly the concept of concurrency and that principle and how that applies to parks recreation as well as other utilities and public services and facilities. And I am not aware of what the developer's agreement or the special tax assessment, how those would pay for potential parks facilities. So I did not cover that and that, but that's certainly one way to achieve concurrency. The land, you think that elements as well as the master plan layout clearly parkland as defined can be public or private. They are, have agreed to provide seven 10-acre neighborhood parks within each of their park service planning districts as shown on their maps, as well as two major parks of about 160 acres. So that's about 230 acres that have to be public. The remainder could be private or public. And of that parkland, it could be what we typically conceive of as parks with sports fields and walking trails and playgrounds, or it could be greenways, or it could be natural areas. So a lot of different things that are being conflated in this term parkland, which isn't inherently good or bad, but typically when you look at that, you do calculate each of those levels and sort of, so you have appropriate, particularly with access. So you have access of, say, I want to have a five-minute walk. Every resident is with a five-minute walk of a park or movement space serving civic function. But that's different from a five-minute walk to a greenway, which is arguably just as important, but we haven't really figured out. We're still establishing our level of service for all of these things through this parks master plan. So this is more just saying factually, here's what this says. And the pre, present element land values that discussed. And really the other thing is using fee and lieu at all. If you're having much of that parkland not being public, then, you know, it's, it's more likely that you'll want that land and need that land for parkland, meaning local or regional park needs. So typically, the parks master plan's going towards getting away from fee and lieu and making sure that each, not only each local neighborhood has its local needs met, but also there's provision for regional needs. So large soccer complexes that would draw people from all over Pittsburgh. You'd have to drive there. It's beyond a specific local neighborhood need. So all of those, the needs for all of those facilities are necessary with growth. So typically in that with public facilities work ethic is how do you want to achieve those facilities, those parks? How do you want to pay for them? What's the role of the developer? What's the role of the town? And I know that you're engaged with many discussions beyond just this that we'll look at different aspects and different answers to that.
Paul, you're engaged in the parks master planning process. What can you tell us about your timeframe?
Well, we'd like to try to finish up by July, August. That's, that's the idea right now. And I think that's achievable.
And that could inform the conversation of how this board reviews the quantification of public space for parks and recreation as specifically with regard to greenways locked together with natural areas, locked together with program design developed parks.
It will inform those decisions. And some will be rather broad in nature. You need to look at these things in your ordinance. You need to consider concurrency in your ordinance system. The draft that you have now goes through code review, goes through master plan review. And the vision, which is being written now, will address the needs that came through in the survey to the additional visioning work sessions that we most recently had. That'll all be combined and articulated in the next visioning phase. And then that will lead to implementation. We'll get back to the board and say, what's regalistic for achieving in one year, five years, 10 years? What's the land plan for this? So it's really a back and forth process. That, that plan will inform these decisions as well as, and policies as well as those in the UDO. And likewise, those things will inform the parks plan.
Questions for Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from the board for the developer or for staff?
It was an excellent memo, an excellent presentation, very helpful. And I look forward to hearing more from staff on many of these items. It feels like there's still a pretty good to-do list there.
Jeff Jones, could you sort of speak for a moment about the philosophical difference between what it is that we can expect the developer to do in this instance in the town? I mean, I'm seeing a really strong disagreement in a sense between what Chatham Park proceeds to be done. Chuck coming to the front.
Yeah, I spoke about it in the memo a little bit. I think there's a few instances where there's some separation between us and them and we want more us as a town. And some of the items that are pointed out in the general objectives and such, that's what any help detail is expected to. And those aren't things that necessarily need to be Chatham Park only. We're going to look at the town as a whole. We're going to look at the tax base, the revenue that we're getting. And while we do have, while the language is not strong that says we must or shall, it does say things such as consideration would be given to Chatham Park on additional revenues that might be generated. Also, Chatham Park, those are types of, that's the type of language that you could either soften a little bit to say, not Chatham Park, but we're going to have consideration of all revenues from the town. And you, Chatham Park, are the town. There doesn't need to be a difference between us and them in that type of, that, that language in public. One, I don't even know if, what's the enforceable language there that if we, if it's in the element, are you all and folks that come after you for years to come going to have to go to that one line in the element to say, oh, yeah, we got to give consideration to Chatham Park. They generated, you know, $30 million this year. All that needs to go back to Chatham Park. Now, Chatham Park or is it Town Pittsburgh? What's the play here? And that's where I think you all need to engage the applicant in that type of language. Is what are we trying to do here? Is it, are we trying to ensure a healthy, vibrant community? Are we trying to ensure a healthy and vibrant Chatham Park? And that's what I want you all to, to engage on with the applicant.
And sometimes it's outright, it says the newer, the older section in, in section two of the introduction, paragraph two of the introduction. And then other times, the tilt seems to be a little bit more surreptitious or discreet. The greatest number of people, well, there's no question where the greatest number of people's going to be.
Right.
So, so.
There's those nuances that I think if you read it and you read it again and again, you can pull out some things that we as the, as the two parties can say, let's, let's change this a little bit. So maybe we have to answer some of those questions for you.
Okay. Chuck, can you answer some of those questions for us?
So you want to go one by one of what your questions are? There's been a lot of general.
Could we just start with the philosophical idea of, in, in one of your memo, I was going to, unfortunately, I think I left that on the table. You all did, you do the streets, you do the water, you do the sewer. When you look at us to do all of those, the police, fire, and all of the, are the town's responsibilities? But, but from a philosophical standpoint, are we we or are we them and us? Or are we the town in Chatham Park? How are we viewing ourselves at this point? Because we've talked a lot about being a we.
We are a we. We're part of the town of Pittsburgh. So any money spent in Chatham Park is being spent for the town of Pittsburgh.
But does that mean that, that revenue balance needs to, to be tilted toward improvements in Chatham Park? Just because you all are bigger and the newer and the, yeah. In a sense, the town is, is more needy philosophically as far as our old infrastructure and things like that. So when you look at things from a revenue balancing standpoint, is it, is it fair that, that Chatham Park should have sort of an edge or the, or the tilt of the playing field?
One, I don't think revenue balancing is anywhere in here. So I don't know what you actually mean by that. We are, everything we build, we are building with our money and it's new. So I don't see that you're going to have a need for a good long while to be dedicating public money to Chatham Park. There are, the language in there about reimbursement of fees is in there. But I think Jeff had a good, it could be, it could be more clearly written because it was intended to, for reimbursement for oversizing or providing amenities that serve areas outside of Chatham Park as well as Chatham Park. So it was not getting a tax assessment district issues at all. This was all written before tax assessment was a twinkle in our eye.
Yeah. Does that need to be inserted and clarified?
If, if there's any particular sentence or words that you think can be worded better, let us know what those are. Because that's not the intent. Yeah, but there is language in existing policies you have and existing ordinances you have that talks about when you get payment in lieu or other fees, that they try to be used in the areas where they were generated, not somewhere else. You've got that in your town policies right now. So I don't think that's, you know, contrary to that, to the spirit of that language.
Well, I, continuing on this kind of philosophical thing, in objective two, I was thinking that.
The general objectives.
Yeah, on the second page. That in a sense, Chatham Park residents may very well have a different set of expectations from, about the provision of services and amenities than, than downtown Pittsburgh.
But you have, without Chatham Park, you have that today between existing neighborhoods and downtown Pittsburgh and the other area. I mean, you are, you get to balance those, those comments. Chatham Park residents will be part, will be residents of the town of Pittsburgh. And so you'll be, they'll be coming and speaking to you just like everyone else does right now. And you'll be weighing those comments and making your decisions. I don't, I don't see anything in here that says big, bad Chatham Park gets more consideration. And, you know, I'll, this thing has been, you know, this was a requirement for us to provide this, but in, in the introduction, it talks about the purpose of this is to provide guidance. That's it. You make the decisions. And we are not providing, we, we're, we're building what we have to build to build the development. Streets, water, sewer, parks, greenways. But you make, you approve every plan that comes in. Nothing gets built without you approving it.
What did you think of the point that was made, I think, by Liz Cullington with respect to making sure that all needed easements were in place? So that there would be, in the future, less disturbance with respect to trying to place easements around already populated areas. I don't remember specifically what you all had to say about that in your commentary.
Well, I think we've got a, first of all, all easements will be taken care of, obviously, of all easements within Chatham Park. But there are some easements that would be required as you go offsite to, back to your existing sewer plant or other facilities that are yours. One instance that I think is before you, although it hadn't been talked about much during these meetings, is the, was the Woodson easement that is outside of Chatham Park. That, from our, I don't, that's not something that we can go acquire. That has to be done. As you say, we are we. It is not us and you. And that is where we need to work together on things like that. Because from our standpoint, that is a win for both, for everyone because it saves the town money by doing that ultimately. You're going to incur a great deal of ongoing maintenance cost if you don't do that because you'll have additional pump stations and lines to maintain that would not be there if you went through this location that is proposed. So, that's not something that, I mean, obviously, it makes, it certainly makes it easier to build. It can be built without it, but it saves the town and therefore the taxpayers money in the long run. So, that's, I don't necessarily, I don't have the wording in Ms. Cullington's comments in front of me, but I do remember addressing it and not agreeing with the point.
Chuck, I'll mention, and thank you, Jeff, for alleviating a couple of things from the fire department because I did talk to Chief Griffin today. And he took it as a kind of an insult, the last little section of that in the, let's see. I got three copies and one of them, I don't think Rachel's too many, it's so small. But.
Is this the highlighted yellow?
I can't even reach, leave it to her.
Oh, well, that's not, I've got, I've got like.
I got two more of those others. But no, again, before it said that Chatham Park would give guidance to the fire department and town on equipment. Yeah, that was just, that was just something that brought to our attention. You know, it feels like me, the fire department, is more capable of having our personnel, equipment versus Chatham Park.
And I absolutely agree with that. We absolutely agree with that. And can I expound?
It did sound like that.
So, what we said in that particular, if I'm going, since you can't read.
I got it on two other pages.
Yes, yes, I'm looking at the yellow highlights too. But I believe that what you're talking about is where we say development standards will be provided that give guidance. When you're, because one of the things, if you're looking at ladder trucks, for example, you need to know what the building height maximum is. That's the sort of thing we're talking about. We would give you building heights. We will never try to, I respect those guys so much and I think they would say, we've been, we've been pretty good about meeting with them as we've gone through the processes here. If this was insulting in any way, it was absolutely unintended to be because all we're, and I think we've told all of you, as we've done this, it really is trying to provide guidance because you don't have enough staff or enough resources to do a fire plan. And so, when I choose a level of service and response time, I'm not, I'm not trying to tell you that's what you should use. I mean, this is up to you to do this. But at the back when the master plan was approved and we were asked to do these elements, it said, we don't have the resources or staff. We would like you to help us and give guidance. So, that's all this is trying to do. You can throw it away and they can do exactly what they think is best. But those things were pulled out of a vacuum. I mean, they were pulled using national standards. They may not apply here, but it was, it was trying to take good information from other places. So, but particularly when you're talking about, as I said, I think building heights is probably the most obvious one that gives you direction on what you need to be doing with equipment.
Right, and I agree with you on that. And also on the building height too, I'm sure most of our commercials are going to be sprinkled, correct?
Well, right now, we've been confronted with a lot of situations because we don't have the water pressure to be, there are certain things. So, we have to sprinkle or we have to do other measures right now that may not be used in the future.
But yeah, and what I'm trying to get to him is more or less is, you know, when you're talking about equipment, is a ladder truck is more important when you get into high-density homes to have protection for others. It's really not that great for a commercial building, I'm trying to say. I mean, it will be used more in a residential area that's not sprinkled when most of your commercial buildings are sprinkled. I'm going to say Mosaic, they probably, eighty-nine percent of their buildings are sprinkled.
I can't speak to that.
That's just a, just a thought I bring. And another thing, when I was reading over this several, and it did, the reimbursements, and Jeff went over that, I think that's something we really need to look over very well because several reimbursements came up here. Boy, and I was really surprised to see them. The word reimbursements, let me get, let me get back over here. Development, earmarking development fees paid for yard to development in Chatham Park, the expansion of public infrastructure. I mean, seems like me, and believe me, I read it real quick today, that we are reimbursing Chatham Park for money that they're putting in the ground, in the water, the sewer, the infrastructure.
But that's only for those areas that are outside. Reimbursement is not for things within Chatham Park that we are building just for Chatham Park. If we're building a water tank that is serving all of Pittsburgh.
Right.
If we're, if we're oversizing a sewer line or a water line that serves areas outside of Chatham Park, that's the reimbursement we're talking about. We're not talking about reimbursement for those public facilities that are purely for Chatham Park.
Can you tell me where that is? I didn't, I'm sorry, I did not read that. I'm sure I must have overlooked it.
Well, reimbursement is in Section four, water, and Section five, sewer. Each has kind of the same language for both of those. And, I mean, I'll go to the line and Jeff has pointed this out, so I would agree, the mayor also, we could write it better. But it's, the sentence is, and oversizing to accommodate provision of, provision of service for properties located outside of Chatham Park.
I'm sorry, where'd you get that?
I'm looking in the, I'm on page twelve. Section four, the water supply starts on page eleven. And Objective three is reimbursement.
Redline doesn't have page numbers yet.
Yeah, if you're looking at, I'm looking at the clean version. But it's, again, Section four, you can, Section four is water supply. Section five, there's sections, sanitary sewers also in Section four. So, Section four is what you're looking for.
That would be twelve and fourteen.
Twelve, that's the page numbers that I've got for it.
Who need, who copies?
I'd agree with you on that too.
Is the small type version that was in the packet the same document that Tim handed to this board twenty weeks ago?
Yeah, since I haven't seen anything in your packet, I can't tell you what's the same or, but I'm just looking at what I've got as.
Does that, I'll check a lot more later.
Oh, yeah, I can't, I've got three copies. You have a copy that's smaller.
Supply out before the large print first.
It was November, it was dated November twenty-ninth. That's the most recent language. So, if it's November twenty-ninth, the only difference between copies would be what would have a redline version and what would be clean.
Well, on the clean version, under reimbursement, under water on page twelve, Section A talks about reimbursement for increased eligible output of Chatham Park. And it specifies a list, and likewise on page fourteen with respect to the sanitary sewer reimbursement.
It talks about the development agreement too. You'll be approving that as well.
Questions? Any show, questions for Chuck or staff?
Yeah, I will say though, that, you know, a lot of the language does talk about the small area plans and designating fire stations, police stations, schools, parks, those kinds of things. And that's the point at which, again, we get together to say, is that the location? So, I think that's going to work.
That's.
I think it's going to work. I think the small area plan is the vehicle because it's big enough to understand what the demand will be or help contribute to the knowledge base of the demand.
And I agree with that. I, to do it beyond a small area plan would be difficult just because standards for, for all these facilities could change by the time you get twenty-five or thirty years from now. Trying to define that right now, that gets you locked in on that, doesn't seem to be the best thing to do. So, that's why we tried to assign that kind of information, giving you that further guidance at the small area plan level.
And, you know, I won't, it took, it took a while to get back into it. I'm sure I, I'm sure I fully am back in it for five months. It's solid, it's irrelevant, so I do want to spend some more time with it. But thinking from a big picture perspective, one of the things that I think I have mentioned through the process of going through the master plan was the idea that there needs to be reservation for development capacity for the public facilities. And what I mean by that is, let's not get to the end of a small area plan saying, we don't have enough impervious surface for that school. So, we have to do some set aside for those kinds of things. I know we're talking about this watershed scoring system, which I'm not sure how you set it aside. But we don't want to get to a place where we defeat ourselves in our ability to provide for those public facilities that we're talking about.
I think it's a great point.
So, I think we need to weave that in.
And in other, other impervious limit situations I've been in, you know, for example, where you had to, you had a two-hundred lot subdivision and you had to, you had a maximum impervious surface requirement, that would, you would then generate an average of eight thousand square feet per lot that you had to track throughout the process. And so, with the stormwater element, we will be tracking all those things to be able to do it now. But I, but I do agree with your point for, I'm not sure that the school would ever be the last thing to be built.
Right.
So, I think that's one of the safeguards, but it could. And therefore, that should be addressed. I would agree with that.
It's something that I think we've got to be aware of and thinking about. And throughout, you know, the schools, there's talk about dedication of property.
But we can't talk about schools. No, you can talk about it, I can't, I already said some, well, that was an example. I'm not allowed to talk about schools tonight. I promised Dr. Jordan I wouldn't do that.
I asked you to talk about schools.
Okay.
Just using schools as a, as one of the items that Chatham Park is providing land for, or at least a structure and framework for making a decision on accepting that dedication. Doing that for parks, and honestly, I think it'd be appropriate for police stations and fire stations as well. So, that's, I'll say that. Don't have to weigh in, don't have to answer at all. But I think that'd be appropriate. And there is language in the schools section that talks about, you know, the decision point being made such that water and sewer is available to the land. And I think part of the conversation needs to be that school will demand those utilities and therefore they must be extended for that school, not just happenstance that, oh, now they're available, we'll take the school because the school might be wanting to be in that location that we've decided on two years previous to today. So, that's part of the conversation. I'm fighting on the specifics I need to leave. But what I'm expecting is that the small area plan is going to inform us that the land being dedicated is suitable for the particular facility and that we have an idea and amazing schedule for when those improvements to the land will be made and that they also be suitable for the specific facility.
I'm a blank face because I'm not talking about schools.
So, I'll, you know, engage it somehow. But that's my higher level.
I really appreciate you sharing the thoughts. And I strongly agree.
Okay, so I should be prepared for those comments next meeting?
If you would import, if you would be thinking about them, yeah.
The ones you, yeah, I've written down what you've already said.
Yes, please.
Other thoughts or are we at a point where we're going to let this marinate as Jackson? I think we're.
Okay, I'm tapping out. There's another phrase.
It is nine-thirty. Is anybody interested in a break? What's your name? Should we refill water bottles? Luke by Michael Peirce, who's talking about Phil Hall, would it be favor free for us? We're back in session. Someone making a motion to go back in session. Luke by Michael Peirce, Craig by Jay Carroll. Those in favor, please, if I say aye.
Aye.
Those person carries, we're back in session. At the break, almost just opened to me saying that Leanne Brown, the attorney for the Eagles project, has asked to be able to address the board. And given the fact that there is a motion that's already dealt with it, I'm just asking the board for their thoughts about hearing from Ms. Brown. And given the fact that there is a motion that's already dealt with, I'm just asking the board for their thoughts about hearing from Ms. Brown. Pardon?
Yeah, Burton Brothers, that's...
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. There really was not a procedure to stand up and speak once you had made your motion to consult with the attorney. I want to share with you our thoughts on where we are with this project. We would like to have a peaceful solution to what we are dealing with, with the town of Pittsburgh concerning the project. And I want to share with you my thoughts on where we are and where we're going. First of all, my client, Eagles Enterprises LLC, has committed to purchase this lot in a way that it really cannot correct without a significant financial burden. It's made the decisions to involve itself with this lot based on a clear understanding of what your zoning ordinance allows and requires. What your ordinance requires with regard to this use is that Eagles present a plan to you that meets your ordinance provisions. It has done so. There was nothing, it answered everything you ask of it tonight, but there was nothing that you ask of it that is a standard that your ordinance would allow you to impose in addition to the standards that you have. And the law is very clear on site plan approval, that you are required to issue a site plan if the requirements of your ordinance are met. A failure to do so would entitle Eagles to seek redress through the court system to get the permit to which it is entitled, and it entitles it to attorney's fees under the statute. This is not where we want to go, but Eagles brought me in because it was informed early in its public process that it was not going to get its permit despite the fact that it was able to comply. You tabled this matter tonight so that you could speak with your attorney about this project. I have scoured the closed session requirements to figure out what you can do with, you can certainly ask him, he's sitting here, and you can ask him his point of view. There's non-provision in the law that would allow you to go into closed session to discuss this until such times as this became a litigation matter, which I hope it never has to do. Mr. Messick did opine to the planning board about the requirements in your ordinance. And I think it is fair to say that his take on what the law requires you to do and mine is the same. Mr. Messick opined about the different processes that exist in zoning. And he stated unequivocally in his memo, "Under the existing zoning ordinance, approval of site plans is an administrative decision, and neither the planning board nor the Board of Commissioners has any authority to require anything other than compliance with the specific terms of the ordinance." All of the information before you has demonstrated that this project complies with the specific terms of your ordinance. I want to say to you that I respect very much where all of you are coming from. You are in elected office, you and other citizens have visions for how you would like to see the town develop. And you have a lot of tools in state law to begin to develop this town as you'd like to see it develop. However, you have not adopted any of the tools that would exist to address the kinds of things you talked about tonight in your ordinance. And people purchase property with an understanding of what rights they have, and they are legal rights. A failure to grant a permit when it's due is not only something that can be taken to court to have the permit granted, but if it is a violation of someone's constitutional right to use their property under color of state law, and it's done for a purpose and with the knowledge that it's illegal when it's done, also creates another kind of cause of action. I have no choice tonight but to ask you to recognize that while you have many, and I listened to you talk, for example, about looking at doing a new overlay district with the Board of Your Historic Story District, and that's exactly what you need to do if you want to be able to have those kind of rules in place. If you want to have provisions that say that a use like this or needs a special use permit so that you can look at other kinds of concerns. You have the ability as a legislative body to change your ordinance going forward to do that. But where we are tonight is that I have a client that's going to suffer an economic hardship if it does not get its permit in a timely manner. You have that information before you that requires you to grant the permit. You cannot go into a closed session to discuss this with Mr. Messick, but he is sitting in the room, if you want to ask his point of view. And what I need to ask you to do, and I must ask you to do, is to reopen the matter and to grant this site plan approval as you're required to do by law so that this project goes forward. A failure to do so will simply continue to cause economic harm to these folks, and it's an economic harm that I believe is actionable. So I would ask you, please, to, if you have anything you want to ask Mr. Messick legally, your motion was to consult with your attorney about it. He's provided a memo, I think he can answer your questions, they have to be answered in public. If you email him next week, I can do a public records request and get the information. So why don't we talk through it so that you can act as you need to act on this project? Again, I respect that you're under public pressure, I respect that you wish your ordinance were different, but it is not. And I would like very much for us to get this resolved so that my folks can move on, and so that the town can move on, and you can do the hard work you want to do and need to do to continue to work with your ordinance to make it work for you. And I appreciate you letting me speak to you very much.
Can I move that we return to the agenda?
Returning to the agenda is an order, I don't know that we need to...
Have a motion.
To move on it. So we're with Brian, Bruce Beck, on your update of the matters that have come before him recently?
Mayor Proton Baldwin mentioned a couple of upcoming meetings. I'm not sure if you, there's another issue or possible board that has come to my attention, I'm not sure if you've received the email I sent from the Commission on Aging, the director, the director has asked for our representative from the town to participate in a community advisory committee to work with that five-year plan. He's indicated that it can be either board or staff. Just like I said, put that before you, if you don't feel like you want to make that decision tonight, then just let me know one way or another. But I don't know if you've ever had the opportunity, Dennis runs a pretty good meeting, so it's definitely, you know, definitely would be worth your while, time spent in those meetings. So just let me know about that if you could. As I go over to, as I go over to the items, oops, I go over to the items here, I want to draw your attention to another piece that I put in front of you this evening. It looks like this up on the screen, it's an overview of the different various plans that we're currently in process on right at the moment. Jeff mentioned, I won't go through that blow-by-blow, but there's two pages of them. I plan on, unless I hear strong objections, making this part of the updates. I liken it to herding cats or keeping plates spinning. You know, we, a lot of times have to keep these plates all spinning, and as I go through these today, you know, I realize there's an awful lot of work going out there looking at here, on issues that you guys in the board have expressed a lot of concern about on a day-to-day basis. So let's please, you know, review this piece right here, just provide a simple explanation of what, you know, what the purpose is, whose responsibility, and then some of the things that happened most immediately. Was that you can see, I think, when you look at, a lot of the things we've been working on, March has been, you know, in addition to maybe over focusing on a basketball team or two, March has been a very busy month for staff. What's that?
You lost.
I still spent a lot of time watching it. System, getting back to the plan, or excuse me, the updates. Northside Water System Improvements, we continue to install the PRVs, the individual services, we're almost done with that. We made an attempt to get water up to the new tank this past week, it was a little bit of a challenge with that. We were able to do it once we worked with the main near the traffic circle, valve near the traffic circle. We're exploring what the difficulty with that was, we're anticipating that we'll have everything wrapped up by May of this year for completion and operation after the water tank and the new main. You see, the electric vehicle has still is upgraded, not at the time of this writing, speaking, not heard when Duke Energy will be in to flip the switch on that. The, I would also, I guess, at this point, leave it to you guys, Duke has wondered when and how and if you want to do some sort of ribbon cutting or ceremony on this one, which represents our first, our trading station, so please consider that, give some thought to it, I'd be more than happy to help set something up and then get out of the way. Continuing forward, vehicle idling policy, you'll recall that the mayor talked a little bit at the last meeting about some environmental, possible environmental changes that we could make as part of the town is concerned with our operations, should be suggested, most salient lead of vehicle idling policy. You have also in your packet an FYI, in the FYI section, a memo from Chief Crossfield, and I attached to that a sample idling policy. I think it was from Colorado, but there are quite a few of them out there that are fairly standard. And if you want to give a look at that or glance at that and see if that's something you would be interested in, you know, certainly from our standpoint, the town, I think, could benefit from it, not only from a fuel savings standpoint, but also from an environmental standpoint as well. So thank you for that suggestion, let us know what you want to do with that. As I also indicated, we have some new staff at the wastewater treatment plant. We have later this week, building program meetings continuing with finance and administration for planning for the new town hall. And then the engineering hiring process, we received five applications, all are from experienced candidates, and there was concern expressed recently about whether or not the advertisement, I think that was actually, part of that was the advertisement that I think Bill had used when we previously opened up the position, the three-to-five-year issue. All of the five applications were above five years of experience. So I don't, I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be the predominant issue. So we're looking at scheduling interviews in the next probably two weeks, depending on availability for that, and then we will let you know on that. This is where I tried to plug in that systems plan table, and I don't know why it kind of took on the funky kind of color there, but I'll change that up so it's a little bit more visible on the screen and on the paper. Like I said, that'll be part of, I'd like that to be a part of our strong objectives, that's be a part of regular meetings from now on, at least have an idea of what the latest is with these various plans that we've got in process right now. And upcoming meetings, the only other thing I would highlight with upcoming meetings is that we want to, I believe, at the next meeting set, consider, or at least consider, a budget work session date that's coming up on us. We're looking at submitting, we're not looking at submitting the actual budget until late May to you, but I think we may want to stay ahead a little bit and consider how we want to talk about this budget. You know, ahead of time, there's, you know, some requests, various requests for work sessions or shops, other committees, things like that, take your time. With that, I will tap out and open it up for any questions, however, if you have. Thank you very much.
Can I ask questions with concerns?
Brian, I wonder if you have the draft budget ready? I'm just thinking of having a look at it before we set a date, if that makes sense.
We'd be, we'd have the draft budget ready probably out earlier than May.
Right. And when in May?
Well, I would be submitting it to you in, I think, the second meeting in May.
Twenty-nine, so that's the earliest it'll be ready?
There's a lot of work that has to go into it, I think, before it's really camera-ready for you.
So twenty-nine's the date?
That's what I'm shooting for, it's just, if it can be earlier, I will try to make it earlier.
So I just think then we would do a work session after we had it?
But I'm just saying, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that we do the work session before you have the budget in the package. I'm just saying, let's think ahead to the date that we want to have the work session. So if we could identify that date in advance, that would be great. If not, then just cross that bridge when we come.
All right, thank you. Next is Commissioner's Concerns, Jay Carroll?
Other than, I suppose, John, I guess, two regarding the handrails, possible, put a couple on the east side, a couple more on the west side, the mayor said. I think the same, I'm going to the end half, I'm not really sure.
Moving on down, you gonna be in, you gonna be at work tomorrow morning?
Yeah, well, yeah, of course. Five-thirty, we gonna be?
Uh, I think a little bit later. I got a night in Hocke House office, so I'll come to you about eight.
All right.
All right.
Michael?
Brian, was just wanting to follow up with Waste Industries, they were, I had some questions for them, they were gonna take down and send, I think they said they were gonna send you in now, so I don't know if you've seen it.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't received the email to say that they're working on it, I had another question. I'll see where they're at, maybe by the next meeting.
That'd be great, yep. And nice job on the parking spaces in the town hall.
I'll bet so.
The new town hall. Soon to be town hall.
That's right, okay.
All right. So is there a motion to go into closed session to consult with our attorney?
Madam Mayor, I believe that Mr. Bruce Beck and I got our signals crossed, I thought we were gonna, needed to talk about something that he doesn't think we do, so I don't know that there's any need for the closed session to talk to me anyway.
Well, that's, I think, there's a need for a closed session, we're calling a agenda, and it's our understanding that that...
Okay, well, the matter, I thought we were gonna talk about it, Mr. Bruce Beck and I think we're ready to talk about it.
No, I would like to say one thing, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I know that Eagles has a change here with their presentation. Believe me, I've got as many emails as everybody else is that doesn't like the Eagles coming in, and I know they're like to be, to be there with our old ordinance. I don't know if we need some guidance from our Mr. Messick, or how we should handle this, but I definitely don't think we need to go into the judicial system or the court system or anything with this issue.
The meeting tonight is not up, it's not up, our closed session night is not going to be...
Okay, I'm not really saying that it is about Eagles, I'm just saying that we probably should need to... probably should need to, you know, we don't want to seek any kind of injunction or anything from the Eagles slowing it down. And I, you know, believe me, I don't, I empathize, I'm just a, I don't want to see this in color. I don't even, I've heard a good chance we're not going to win, so, and that, you know, that's not one of the views, so, I don't know if you're that is. What do you think, Mr. Messick?
I'll be glad to talk to you. Not about Eagles.
And why is that, my ass?
Uh, I can't, we can't talk about general policy issues in closed session.
No, I don't want to go in closed session.
Oh, oh, sure, we can talk about it, whatever you want to talk about.
Closed session, there's no policy.
I don't know what's about, if there's not about.
Think we need to go into closed session and figure out what it's about?
I don't know what it's about.
Yes.
I have no idea what it's about. If it's not about, we don't, then we can talk.
Okay.
Wherever.
It can be, it can be as fast as you want it to.
I don't know what it is. All right. Is there a motion? Did we, did you?
Pursuant to the statute, it's in the...
Pursuant to the statute.
It's in the agenda.
Yes, to the notice, public notice.
Is there a...
Can I, we also had A four to it as well as A three.
Should have four and three.
A four is economic development.
Motion by John Bonnet, seconded by Pamela Baldwin, all those in favor, please indicate if you can, aye? Motion carries.
I'll be on the call.
I don't read, but you can stay here, folks.